Time being six thirty, I'll call this meeting to order. We have a couple of things on the agenda tonight. First of which is going to be a public hearing for a component pack. This meeting is being recorded. And anybody from the public, this is a public hearing, you will have a chance to speak. I just would like you to introduce yourselves when you do want to speak. I'll start off by reading the public notice. As it appeared in the Brighton Enterprise on August the fourth and August the eleventh. Notices hereby given pursuant to Mass General lines forty-eight, section nine, section four point four, table of use regulations, wireless communication facility, section seven point two site plan approval, and section seven point five special permit, and section eight point four point six, the Westbury water zoning bylaws submitted by Chapel Engineering on behalf of SBA Monique Towers LLC and African, Lara Deluce Horizon Wireless. The Westbury Water Planning Board holds a public hearing on Wednesday, August the twentieth, twenty twenty-five, beginning at six thirty in the McDonald Brown Conference Room at Town Hall. The intent for the plan is to modify the special permit site plan, town clerk file number one six nine, to increase the height of the wireless tower by ten feet and make related improvements for the property located at one component pack in the industrial district. It is signed by the Westbury Water Planning Board and appeared in the enterprise on August the fourth and August the eleventh of two thousand and twenty-five. That being said, is somebody here from Verizon?
Hi.
If you would introduce yourself and tell us what you're proposing to do.
I'm with SBA, the tower company, on behalf of both Verizon and SBA. My name is Paul Celara. And I'm here with the intent to extend the tower for section sixty-four oh nine as an eligible facility request to accommodate Verizon wireless equipment inside of the existing platform. So just extending the tower by ten feet and utilizing the existing compound. There's an existing shelter there. Used to have some equipment from another carrier, I think it was Sprint. They removed the equipment and Verizon intends to utilize that space as well. That's gonna help your town's first responders, police, and your citizens as well with the signal.
Is it going to sort of increase the coverage for everybody in the?
Correct, yes. Verizon is not there. I think T-Mobile is. And they need that circle in order to improve the quality of the cell.
Is everything going to be in the existing footprint?
Yes, yes.
So you're using the existing building?
Correct.
The tower, other than being high, is not spreading out?
No, no.
And you'd be just using the existing right away that you have on the property?
Yes, everything is existing. They're just gonna utilize an existing shelter that's there. They're not going to alter anything.
Are there any personnel there to operate this? Or is it just visit once in a while?
Meaning from?
Do you have any of the people working there all the time?
No, it's a non-man tower. In case they need some maintenance, the owner, they'll reach out to us and we'll send somebody, a contractor or something. But that rarely happens. In this case, we'll have a construction supervisor license. And if you require, we'll fire for a building permit after here. And then we'll schedule everything for you. Inspection, et cetera.
I've got a couple of things here. One of which we have a response from the Board of Selectmen. And they say that they have no objections or concerns with the proposal. And that is the only one that we did get. I know you gave us quite a few plans, which for the most part evolved electrical. Nothing to do with what's going on because you're virtually not changing anything physically. Nothing on the ground is being physically changed. It's only the upper part. Does anybody from the public have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
When we originally had this?
Would you introduce yourself?
I'm sorry, my name is Eleanor Keating, forty-four Commonwealth Avenue. When we originally had that cell tower put up, a lot of the neighbors didn't want it to have, but it was put up anyway. It was only supposed to be three carriers. And if they decided not to be in it, that it was going to be taken down. Now you want to not only have the base of it, but you want to put it ten feet higher. And I think the concern that a lot of people have is the height of it. And what happens if it falls? What happens to my houses directly right behind it?
In here, there's a report. Would you?
Yeah, we work with engineers. We usually, we provided a structural analysis saying that this tower is perfectly sound to accommodate Verizon. It passed. We're gonna modify it, making sure that the radio is protecting everybody surrounding the tower. And it's been approved also by the federal, by the FAA. So it's not going, it's not, it's just ten feet per federal law. We, they approved us to do that, but we need to reach out to the town in order to get their approval as well. But structurally, it's sound and it's not gonna fall down.
How far are you from the lot line? Closest lot line, how abouters? That was a question I had about it that can't be.
I don't have a copy of the abutters. They didn't send it to me.
Okay, to the fence. What's the distance from the base of that tower to the houses on the north side of the fence on the lot line?
It is on page eight zero one. Let me see. I can answer that question. I need to see the drawings or something, but.
Is it over a hundred and thirty feet?
Yeah, most likely it's way over it. I can let you know.
Because the towers are required to have a drop zone?
Yeah, yes.
So it's gonna fall well safe of the lot lines, which is?
And I'm sure that's why the board approved it and have no concerns about.
Well, we approved it at a hundred and twenty. But I don't remember what the distance from the base of the tower to the fence.
Yeah, you're increasing the height, so now your fall coverage should increase as well, right?
Yeah, it has to be at least equal to.
Yeah, I was reading that the old five decision actually said it twice.
Yeah.
Two different ways. But yeah, basically, if it falls, it's gonna stay on the property.
Yeah, definitely. That's what they, that's what we have that and the structural as well. It won't fall though. It has way below the hundred percent that's required. If it's, if we have risk that a tower, like speaking from another sites that we have, when we encounter this type of situation where a tower failed on paper, we need to pay in order to modify it and make sure that we rerun everything in order that it's passing structurally.
Yes, my only question is, is the distance at least equal to the height of the tower set back from the property? With an increased height, is it still at least an equal distance of height set back from the property?
That's, I mean, one of the problems I have is this is site plan approval, but we don't have a site plan.
Well, virtually, there is nothing happening.
Well, I know, except for this question about whether it's now a hundred and thirty feet from, at least a hundred and thirty feet from a property line.
A site plan would answer. Well, that's the question.
I mean, it could just have been.
Somebody, the neighbors were both sick, can't be here tonight. They took and asked me to ask it because I couldn't find anything, any numbers.
I mean, we also.
Without peace, going over there and pacing it out.
In two thousand and five, we also told residents that the antennas and dishes shall not exceed ten feet above the level of its attachment to the structure. So now we're increasing it ten feet.
Okay, here, I've got the original. Two thousand.
Five?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-four?
Yeah. From the edge of the, the edge of the building to the property line is a hundred and forty-three feet. And this from the building to the property line, then it is over here, and it's a hundred and forty-three point seven feet. And the tower is actually located right in front of it. Now, it's, it could go over on Turner's property, the industrial property, but it wouldn't never get to the residential properties. In fact, that hundred and forty-three feet is still to Turner's property. And Mrs. Keating's house is. Actually, it's to the Turner property in between. So yes, it's well over the hundred and thirty feet.
Because other than the height, we really don't have a whole lot to say about modification.
No, and that's, when we originally approved this, the conditions, which these conditions will be will be on the new thing. We're not deleting any of them. The tower will be set back from the property line to a distance at least equal to the height of the tower, which it is. Close tower will not require clearing of vegetation. It was in the middle of the, it's up against the building and it's all paved. Night lighting is prohibited unless required by federal authority. And that was determined that it was, that was for the air place. It was nowhere near high enough to be of concern. Tower will be one hundred and twenty feet in height, so that's gonna be changed to one thirty. The tower will be designed to accommodate three co-locations, so it's gonna be some more co-locations put in there. A new structure is necessary as there is existing structure. A new structure is necessary as there are no existing structures that can be accommodated to the tenant and allow next cells to fill the gap in coverage. So that one will be changed because you'll be, one of the conditions will be, it will all be within existing buildings. The flagpole design of the tower will be harmonious and compatible with the area. The tower will be painted a neutral, non-reflective color. The tower will not be erected near to a residential lot line in the height of the, height of the tower permitted so it's already, again.
Downhill.
For redundancy. The antenna will be located within a flagpole and not be visible to the other properties. The tenors, the dishes shall not exceed ten feet above the level of its attachment to the structure. We don't need that one. Because it, I don't know, were they planning it one time, putting dishes on? I don't remember. That was the whole thing, was to be self-contained. I could sell it before. I don't know why we had that in there.
I think that was in there so they could.
Oh, they couldn't, okay. That makes sense now, that makes sense. New structures shall exceed a positive distance from the center of the tower more than twenty-five feet without proving the rules. I think that was the case of the guy wires and I don't know. The only sign located on the property shall be required, a sign given, phone number to where the tower can be reached on a twenty-four hour basis. Basically.
Can I ask another question?
You certainly can.
Is Verizon the only carrier that's gonna be on this?
No, I think, I think you said Verizon.
Yeah, it's just Verizon.
Just Verizon?
Just Verizon, that specific canister, it's for Verizon.
Is that the ten feet?
Yes.
Is anybody else using it now?
No, there is not. We're gonna extend it and.
So, yeah, but nobody else is using that tower now?
I thought it's a T-Mobile.
Yes, there is a few and I feel like.
All right, so it is in use?
Yes.
Yeah, because as little maintenance as is needed to it, there has been some need for maintenance. I mean, it's occasionally panels have on the top of it have.
Okay.
You know, look like they're, they swing open or. On a white pole, when there's a dark spot, you know there's something missed. But I don't think since Nexttel slash Sprint, originally it was Nexttel that put this in, who bought, was bought out by Sprint, who I think has been bought out by somebody else.
T-Mobile.
Yeah. So I don't think they did a whole lot of maintenance. Because that building and tower has been there for, Club Fit was in existence. It was, it was an athletic gym in the area that is all torn down. That's the empty building, that whole building at one time. And prior to that, it was a commercial building for working. But I know when I've been by it, it doesn't look like a lot of maintenance. I went by it today and the doors are wide open going into the equipment room. You know, propped open. Whether somebody's just trying to air it out because we get in a cool day and it was warm, but I would suspect that any equipment in there would be air-conditioned. But its maintenance on it has not been the greatest. But the reason I asked whether anybody's been in there is if it had been vacant, it should have been torn down. Because by law.
Yes, and the reason Verizon wants to utilize the existing shelter, they're gonna make some repairs to it so that they can accommodate the equipment. And then just to go back to your answer as to how many carriers? Currently, just T-Mobile is in that tower. T-Mobile is utilizing one of the canisters and.
There's three. Aren't there three sets of canisters there in it now?
Yes, probably some of them will have some old equipment that's going to be removed once Verizon installs it and extends the tower.
I have another question. If any, if any of the neighbors notice something, who do they contact?
Building inspector.
Building inspector?
He's responsible.
Can you put like a label there so people would know?
Actually, that was one of the things I read.
I can't hear you most of the time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the owner of the tower should be twenty-four hour unnoticed. There should be a number posted at the tower.
There is a number.
I believe it was on the wall or the door that goes into their equipment room, not on the tower itself. Yeah, which is what, ten feet, ten feet away from it?
Okay, it's a number M. The only sign located on the structure shall be required sign given a phone number where it only can be reached on a twenty-four hour basis. So make sure that that's. I'm not sure whether it's, whether your plans have called for it. I know you gave it quite extensive electrical plans on it.
But that's, that's part of the deadover also that was adopted with this law.
But the so it should, but rather than walking over there to see it, just call the town hall.
There's actually a phone number, I'll show you a picture, on the gate. Right here where it says SBA. Okay. Right below there on Oliver Towers, there's a one eight hundred number. And you can reach out there as well, or like you said, to the building inspector.
Okay, is there any further questions or concerns?
What is the diameter of, what will be the diameter at the top then?
Of the canister?
Of the tower itself, the outside, the outside diameter? I mean, I'm trying to, it looks like it's only six inches, six and a half?
Yeah, it starts off like eighteen at the base.
Okay. Because I was reading one of the conditions was like forty-eight inches tapering to thirty.
In the original one, the flagpole, excuse me, flagpole be tapered from a base of forty-two inches to thirty inches at the top.
So this is well small.
So, no, but the, you know, this thirty inches there, so it's. What is it, you gotta come in.
Well, at the top here, it's saying it's only six point six two five outside diameter. It doesn't say anything on the base. Oh, yeah, it does. I don't know what DF is, but it says DF forty-two inches.
The base, right?
Six point seven five outside.
Six inches? Or is it feet? That wouldn't be feet.
No, yeah, it says six point six two five inches outside diameter.
That would be downsizing quite a bit from what it is.
Yeah, but it does say at the base it's forty-two inches. So I can't imagine it tapering down to six point six two five.
The canisters are thirty inches. So the top will be thirty inches. Oh, I think three or four canisters are all be the same, but as you go down, it needs to be widened a little bit.
Okay, so from where it is now up to the top, it's gonna be the same diameter?
Same, yeah, same.
So something, something.
Unless the six inches is per, when you got, you got three, three, what do you call them, antennas attached to each other side by side, maybe that makes up thirty inches.
Yeah, I don't know. Here it is here, my cross-section, thirty inch. The outside of the casing. Eight oh one.
It's fine, it does say thirty inches here at elevation of Lord knows, forty-one minus five is thirty-six, fifty-two, eighty-eight. Oh, that's right there. Twenty feet, six point seven five outside diameter. There's something wrong with these, but it doesn't matter. It just, there seems to be something wrong with those.
Because here's another one. Says it's an existing eight-inch Schedule eighty center pipe plus pipe mask to remain. So they've got an eight-inch mask that all these things are located on. And the outside.
Outside is like a cover.
Diameter is thirty inches.
Okay. Yeah, I just, as long as it's still what it was before. If you're going straight up from one twenty to one thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it? Any future, any further concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Chris, consideration is going to be approval of special permit. Section, Donna, to save you, I'm reading it right from, right from the thing. Section seven point five point three point one. A specific site is appropriate for location of such use. It's already there. Use is developed and offered will not adversely affect the neighborhood. There will be no nuisance or hazard to vehicles and pedestrians of volume greater than capacity the streets affected. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. And access to the site is over the streets is appropriate for the type of vehicles involved. I'll entertain a motion to make the finding on.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Wait a minute, excuse me. Mr. Noyes?
Aye.
Mr. Stetson?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
My wait, wait.
It's not gonna matter anyways, so.
Yes, it does. They have to be, they have to be four.
My thing is, I haven't seen, there was some submittals by the residents with the initial tower winner. That doesn't seem to be in this packet here.
That was twenty years ago.
Which is over twenty.
Well, they still own property around that tower.
Mrs. Keating was here. She was, she was, she was still.
And the Baer family, which is right next to it, they best own what they call it. So he said the.
I also, I guess my question is, is our bylaws state that, you know, it can't be over a hundred and eighty feet. Listed here from the two thousand and five finding, is that a hundred and twenty feet? They're asking to be a hundred and thirty feet. When did it change to a hundred and eighty by our zoning bylaws?
It's a hundred and eighty, was it sort of well under the?
Yeah, they were under one eighty, understand that.
And we're changing from one twenty to one thirty. That's really the only issue on the table.
I guess what I'm asking is, was it agreed to that we would set it at one twenty to the residents in the area?
I believe at the time, that's all they felt they needed.
That's just my concern. Is that, you know, I just wanted the resident input from originally. Because it seems like there's something in there that doesn't line up. It was in there for a purpose.
I know from working, the, we, the company I worked for used to aim the antennas and there were certain heights they wanted because they, they didn't want to be, they didn't want to be on top of the hill. They'd want to be somewhere in, because the rays come out, which I, which I don't understand. All I know is they, the heights mattered and they, they want to get a certain mountain. And twenty years ago, they thought one twenty was adequate. Now, now they.
I believe when this thing was originally built, it wasn't digital.
But you had thirty-four abutters who were opposed to the tower going up originally. So I just, I was wondering if there was any documentation because they said there was something signed and submitted. I was just wondering if there, like an agreement was made to make it a hundred and twenty.
That was what they asked for, so that's what we put it in.
That's what I wanted.
Yeah, it wasn't. That was what was considered adequate.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I mean, it's a good point, but I think that's a different proposal than this one. So I don't believe we can use those comments anymore.
All right, well, I just.
I'm just thinking, it's just.
I'm looking over the residents.
Yeah, no, no.
People that live around.
Well, originally, they, what was it, what is it, was Anna, what do they call it? Analog? When that tower was originally built, analog is, is line of sight. And a lot of the people were upset with, they didn't want the rays coming and hitting them at their house. And the, now, for at least the last ten to fifteen years, everything's been digital. And so digital doesn't affect.
My only concern was that we didn't promise residents it was gonna be one height and never anymore. And here we are twenty years later, bumping it up to a hundred and thirty, that's all. And the only reason I asked the question is because the bylaw is clearly a hundred and eighty feet.
Well, that's a maximum. So anything underneath is a law.
Yeah, we should be fine, yeah. All right.
So how do you vote?
If that's the case, then I'm with favor.
Okay, and here he votes aye. So the vote is four, four, and. So the vote is for, for, and, uh, one of our members is in here, we have a five-member board, so it is four of the, four votes is needed for it. Okay, the, the next one is, uh, considerations for special permit set forth in the wire communications section, eight point four point nine, A, the location of tower device is simple in size, height, and design at the minimum necessary for the purpose. The proposed tower or device will not adversely impact historic structures or seen in views. C, there are no feasible alternatives to the location of proposed tower or device, including co-location, minimizing impact. Indeed, the proposed tower or device is in compliance with federal and state requirements regarding aviation's safety. Uh, this, this is out of our, out of our bylaw, and I think, uh, we addressed those at the time. The only, only one that of these, because it's, it's an existing, it's, it's the height, so the only thing is the height.
Section D? Eight four six, section D.
Eight four nine, eight point four point nine D.
That's six.
Uh, uh-
Well, the zoning bylaw, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Have you, have you, you know, have you got your thing that, that, uh, Tracy sent out?
Yeah.
Cause it, that's taken a step.
I'm reading it from there.
And, and, and this is, what we just read was just-
Well, it's just unfolding the zoning bylaws.
Okay.
And it's eight, eight dot four dot six. Not eight four, eight four dot nine. I think that's just a typo.
Can I ask one more question? Are we going to get better coverage on the Verizon?
Oh, yes, that's the whole purpose.
Okay. Well, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Eight point four four nine, it's just that it's in compliance with federal and state requirements.
Yeah, that's what, eight, it's eight point four point nine is what she has here in the address.
All right, she's just making, we just want to make sure it's in compliance, that's what you're, I think, discussing the heights though, which is eight point four point six.
And three, the application is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw, subject to inconsistencies, the conditions, safeguards, and limitations thereof. I'll entertain a motion to make a finding on, so note three. And the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any further discussion? Mr. Noiz, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Stetson?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
And, and Mr. Hurley votes aye unanimously for a present. And now we got to go to, uh, the conditions. Uh, all the conditions set forth in the plan, voice decision references, uh, telephone file number one sixty-nine, and be required to replace, required, you change the wording from one twenty to one thirty, there be no land disturbance, copy, this must be recorded as- Okay, we got it, recording added to registry deeds, which I'm sure you're, uh, the short time leaves. Are you, are you people kidding, the operators of the whole thing?
They have a perpetual estimate, they're property.
Okay, so that'll have to be approved. They'll, they'll have to do it. And as well, plan is provided to the building commissioner. Plan stands, I haven't, did we, okay. Uh, uh, so we'll need to vote on these conditions. Will I entertain a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Noiz?
Aye.
Mrs. Stetson?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Mr. Hurley votes aye. The vote is carried. Okay, uh, and now we have to do the proposed site plan. I'm not quite sure, other than any change requires a site plan.
Under the new bylaw that just, that we passed, there, it, no change to footprint.
Okay, uh, we'll need a, uh- Okay, we need a, uh, to move to find that, I guess, condition, the site plan guidelines set forth in section seven point two have been considered and satisfied by the applicant. Blah, blah, blah. I need a, uh, a motion.
So moved.
Second, second. And, uh, oh, any further discussion for us? And a motion. And a second. Uh, Mr. Noiz?
Aye.
Mrs. Stetson?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
And Mr. Hurley votes aye. We're, uh-
Sorry, who voted that last one?
This is the proposed site plan motion.
Okay, I had that, it was just the last thing.
And then, uh, let's see, hold on.
Do we, um, just one question, do we know bond is still in effect? There were two posted bond back in oh five, and is it still on offer twenty odd years later?
Oh, it was a bond, a bond or?
I don't think a bond would, yeah, bond, bond you would renew every year, but you would renew at the same amount. So, you know, what's a hundred thousand then?
Let's, let's put it in, then, um, on the, on the conditions, that the, uh, the why is to be, uh, is be determined if the bond is still enforced, and if not, inadequate warrant shall be, for the, um-
I think if the-
Demolition.
Applicant should, applicant should prepare an estimate for approval by the building inspector, and a bond in that amount shall be posted.
Okay, that's good.
Would you put that information once you sent?
It'll be, it'll be, it'll be in there when you're final.
Okay, good, good. Is that where I can, okay, thank you.
I'll give it. I forget all about the bond.
Yeah, that's the cover. If it becomes nega, if it becomes empty and they don't take it down in two years, that covers the town doing it. Otherwise, the town can put a lien on the property.
If it's inactive for two years, they can remove the entire structure.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, we've had subdivisions where they post bond ten years ago, and all of a sudden it's-
That's why we don't take bonds.
Yeah, you can't do anything with it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I wouldn't even mind saying that bond should be renewed at five percent a year or something like that.
So, so proper bond will have to be put in place, so we'll catch it then. Okay, move your right hand. I'll entertain a motion to move to approve the, uh, site plan, changes from a hundred and twenty feet to a hundred and thirty feet. And this, the wording looks in there. Entertainer may have motion?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Noiz, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Stetson?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
And Mr. Hurley votes aye. Okay. And if that, we got it all approved, we will, we will write it up, get it signed, it takes a little while.
It'll take a couple weeks, at least.
Couple weeks. And, uh-
Good.
And, uh, then we'll, we'll notify you when the, it's, cause there is also an appeal period at the end of this.
Who, who's going to appeal?
There is an appeal period.
Oh.
And, and that lady is not going to appeal.
Okay. That's okay. And then I'll have to wait in order to continue my building for my process for that, right?
Yes, after its files, there's a ten day or twenty day?
Twenty days.
Twenty day, twenty day appeal period. And then, then you'll be notified.
Thank you for providing that timeline for your time.
Can you put cards?
Okay.